All right. Item D, we're back together. Item D 2020-2021 calendars, appendix T. Dr. Smith.
Yes, good evening. And I appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening on the 2020-2021 calendar as a representative of the calendar committee. So we, I have six calendars that I'd like to present to you this evening. As you know, historically, as a district, for the last few years, we've had nine calendars. This evening, we have been able to condense three of our calendars into one. So I do have six calendars that I am presenting. I'd like to begin with the Lake Forest calendar. This calendar, as you know, offers an extended year calendar option for students that allows them both to receive academic services as well as mental health services. And because it is a year-round calendar with an additional 15 days of instruction, it allows for continuity that would not be found in any other calendar available across the district. So that is the Lake Forest calendar. Any questions specific to that? All right. The next calendar I-
Should we approve them as we go?
Yeah, I think that would help.
I think that would be good since we know that there's one calendar. It's going to be more of a discussion.
Mm-hmm.
I'm fine approving these calendars as we go.
Oh, which would be great. That would be fun.
Move to approve Lake Forest Academy calendar.
What changes is this calendar from past calendars?
For the most part, it's following the same format. Because it is, you know, truly a Singleton calendar, we reach out to that staff, we ask them for their input based on the needs of their students. The requirements really are around the number of days of employment, which are 230, which is, again, is 15 additional days beyond what we do for our traditional calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the Lake Forest Academy calendar for 2020-2021, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oops, disappeared.
Did I do that?
Killed it.
Very good.
Okay.
All right. Moving on. Whoops, no, there it is.
So that's Lake Forest. Okay. All right, great. So the next calendar that we have for you, and I apologize to them a little out of order, is the Restart Year-Round Calendar. And just as a reminder, this calendar is currently applicable to Snipes and Freeman Elementary School because they are restart schools, which they have calendar flexibility that's built into the legislation that allows them to be restart schools. We are also asking that Sunset Park be able to follow this calendar as well. The principal reached out to his families and received, I want to say, over 80% support of those folks that responded, and he had a very strong showing in terms of the parents that responded, as well as the teachers. And the reason we're asking for Sunset Park to transition from this, to this calendar, from the current year-round calendar, is because they often share children. So there may be children who would transfer between Freeman and Snipes and Sunset Park, but you're not going to have children who will transfer between Sunset Park and Eaton and Cottington most often because those schools, you know, they don't accept students after the school year starts. Sunset Park has a district. Those schools have more of a regional district. So Sunset Park in and of itself is more similar in the types of services and the likelihood that children would move between schools to Freeman and Snipes. So we're asking that Sunset Park be a part of this calendar as well. Again, this calendar, pretty much because it's unique to those two schools, now three schools if you do approve that, we go to those principals. We ask them, and when we said principals, the principals lead the conversation with their staffs, and we ask them to help us design this calendar, and then they bring it to the calendar committee. We put it together for them, but they give us the final stamp of approval. So for the most part, this follows that traditional schedule or the calendar that they have this current year.
Dr. Smith can ask a question. I understand the year-round restart calendar. I don't have any problem with that. But why are children who are in these districts not given the opportunity to go to traditional schools? Because you have Cottington and you have Eaton, which are your application schools that are your year-round schools. Parents choose to put them into year-round schools. And then you have these three students, these three schools, only these schools, that are on year-round calendars, that were telling children to go to those schools instead of giving parents the choice to go to those schools. You see what I'm saying?
Oh, I do. I do understand.
And I understand, I understand the reason why we're doing it. But should parents be given the opportunity to allow their children to go to a traditional school instead of these, instead of forcing them to go to year-round schools? That's, what do you think?
What do I think? Well, I think New Hanover County Schools prides itself on choice options for parents. So I think the more options that we can provide parents, I think the less likely that parents are going to want to look for other options. But I would also say, you know, when we, when we do that and we provide parents with the opt-out, we also burden parents with the responsibility of providing transportation to those other schools. And then also, there may be some considerations in terms of whether or not there are seats that are available in those other schools. But I think, you know, based on our history as a district, providing choice is what we have consistently done, and I would agree that providing our families with a choice option here would be something that they would appreciate.
But I would tell you, the history of these three schools going year-round began with parent input on all three schools.
Oh, yeah.
And the requirement was 80% minimum to make a transition to year-round for these three schools. And all three of them have, when they first went year-round, had that overwhelming parent support. And it was done for an educational purpose in terms of preventing what's a common term is summer loss. We were finding that these kids were going home over the summer, there weren't opportunities over the summer, and so they were coming back, and that long break had some educational issues that we wanted to help overcome.
And I'm not disputing. I think they're, it's a great calendar, what you're doing, for those specific schools. I'm just saying that if a parent were to come to us and say, "We don't want to do the year-round option. We can take our child somewhere else," I just think that it would, it's tough for us to say, "No, you have to go to a year-round school."
And I think you see some of that with the numbers at Gregory. Gregory's traditionally been a school, a traditional calendar school that some of these folks have applied to, and that's one we do provide transportation to.
Just a question. It wasn't a, it was just a question.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I think a very good question and one I very much agree with as well.
Also, a lot of people might not be able to take off and take care of their kids.
I'm sorry.
I'd point out too that the, you know, the story of Sunset Park is probably one of our greatest stories.
Well, Snipes is great too. What they've done with the improvements they've made at Snipes. You know, I mean, with Rachel, she's done great things.
Yes.
So it's, it has nothing to do with what the school is. It just has to do, the question was, is forcing kids to go to a year-round school when other kids have a choice to go to a year-round school is that.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a question. That's all. Thank you for the answer.
Most welcome. Also, as you know, we have-
Oh, wait, do we want to go back to that calendar?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You got to approve it.
Okay. Well, and you may want to do these two together, if that's okay, because it's a Freeman pre-K.
Okay.
So as you also know, we have pre-K at Freeman. So it's the only year-round option that we have where we have pre-K services. And so we have to develop a slightly different calendar. They, for the most part, mirror each other, but they are slightly different just because of the different indications on the calendar, such as home visits and where there might be professional development days and things of that nature. So I would ask that you approve the Freeman, excuse me, the Restart Year-Round Calendar and the Freeman Year-Round Pre-K Calendar together. Second.
All right. So we're moving to approve the Restart, the Freeman Year-Round Pre-K, and then Snipes will be included in that calendar.
Yeah, Snipes.
And Sunset Park.
It is Snipes and Sunset Park and the Restart.
All right. So there was a motion by Mr. Boyer, is that right?
It was Mrs. Nichols.
All right. And there was a second?
Mr. Boyer.
Okay. All those in, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
If we, if we do these schools we've just voted on, are the other schools that we're getting ready to vote on got to be voted on in order for this to work?
No.
No, these are independent.
These are standalone calendars.
Okay.
Yeah. It's our independent. So the next calendar I'd like to present to you is the year-round calendar that would be followed by just Cottington and Eaton. And again, this calendar pretty much mirrors this current year's calendar. We have a representative from those schools. Typically, it's the principal, and I think actually this time, both the principal of Eaton and the principal of Cottington were a part of the committee just simply because they couldn't be there all the same days. And so we essentially developed this calendar based on their feedback. We submit it to them for them to review, and then they give us their approval. And so we're bringing this calendar to you for your approval this evening. It would be the year-round calendar.
There's no proof.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
All right, thank you. And so what I'd like to do now is to share with you just a little bit of information in regards to the proposed calendar changes for what has historically been the traditional calendar. And so we conducted a survey of parents and employees, and you can see the results on the screen. So we received responses from over 5,000 parents and employees. About 60% of that were parents. And overwhelmingly, the response was that they support the change. And again, it's those folks who responded. We did have 23% who indicated that they preferred the current calendar and how that laid out. We had a little over 6% who indicated that they wanted additional information, and then 2.7% chose others. So we gave them that other option. And with the other option, they were able to tell us why. So there were folks who had objections to the three weeks that were, you know, in January, the later January start. There were folks who had objections to how early the calendar started. There were folks who expressed concerns because they had already made plans for the beginning of the school year. And of course, you know, we would definitely work to accommodate those folks as well. So really, those seemed to be the major, and then there were some who had some concerns about how much earlier the spring break was being located in the calendar. So those really seemed to be the major concerns that weren't apparent to us until we did the survey. So we really appreciate the time that people took to complete the survey and the feedback. We think that was very, very, very informative. We also did a student survey, and just to give you some numbers and a little bit of information in regards to that, because I know we had someone speak today about the survey. We did have a student speak about the survey. So information was sent directly to the principal in regards to the survey being launched. We then created index card with a QR code on it, as well as a URL that they could go to. And so students could take a picture of it with their phones, immediately access the survey. Think there were three, four questions. Or they could put that code in. And so we sent information to the principals ahead of time. We told the principals it was coming, and then we sent reminders to them to make sure that they got this information to their students. Primarily, it was targeted to 10th and 11th graders, and we did have 1,000 students respond. The majority of the students that responded were from Ashley High School with 405. Hargardt, we had 167 respondents. Laney, 179. Isaac Bear, 84. New Hanover High School, 73. C-Tech, 37. Wex, 82. And then Mosley, 34. And essentially, the two questions we wanted to know from them was, what impact would this have on their work schedules? And 38% of them indicated that they did not see this new schedule having a negative impact on their work schedule, although we did have 22% that said that they did believe it would have a negative impact on their work schedule. We had quite a few who were unsure at 26%, and then we had 10% of our students indicate that they weren't working. One thing that really did intrigue us, and again, you know, as you know, you know, my first love is instruction, is the fact that we had so many students who expressed an interest in career and college promise courses. So essentially, being able to take courses at the community college. And so we had over 60% of those students who responded indicate that they would be interested in taking those courses. We had 14% who said they weren't interested, and then we had a large number of students who said that they wanted more information. And then they also had another response column, and in that other response column, we had a lot of students indicate that they were already taking these courses. So again, you know, just really excited from an instructional perspective that we have so many children who would love to be able to take advantage of career and college promise courses. In terms of endorsements, we did get an endorsement from the New Hanover County Council of PTAs. We also received an endorsement from the New Hanover County Principal and Assistant Principals Association. And if I remember those numbers correctly, I think it was more than 95% of their principals indicated support. But in those areas where they had some questions, they were very similar to the outcomes that we got from the, from the survey. You know, can we move this here? Do we have to start here? You know, those types of things. And then additional support, we did share this with the teacher advisory, and I'll tell you, our secondary people were elated in terms of supporting this change. We believe strongly that this represents what is best for students instructionally because of what it affords them in terms of when their courses will end, the alignment with the community college schedule, and then the access that it does provide. And so I've listed some benefits, and I think you, most of you have seen these. The additional days for employment in the month of June, although, again, we heard from someone today who said that that actually would be a negative for them. I didn't know that June is the second busiest month, as opposed to, or is it the second or is it the third?
July's first, June's second, August's third.
Yes. The second busiest month, so that would be providing additional workdays there. Again, as I said, better instructional model, reduces the number of calendars from nine to six within the district, which helps to streamline that just a little bit. Provides additional professional development training days. So if you, you know, you've seen the calendar, of course, it would afford to six days at the beginning of the year. And I know we heard today that there is a need for some additional training days specifically to address, you know, our, the mental health needs of our students. This calendar would allow for that to occur at the beginning of the year. Inclusion of an intercession in January, and we've had just preliminary conversations around that, and again, from an instructional perspective. We provide children with intervention at the end of their school year. Typically, it's eight days, and we focus on credit recovery. And it's very, very challenged, challenging to help a child who's gone the entire year to recover a credit. And it's also self-defeating to some degree because, you know, as you know, that point, they've already filled the courts. With the intercession, there would be the opportunity to focus on grade recovery. So a child could receive an incomplete at the end of the semester, semester before receiving that failing grade, and then been given really a second chance, opportunity to recover that credit. We think that directly would impact, positively impact our graduation rate as well. Also, alignment with the community college, college campus course, college course calendar would definitely be a positive. And then the break with the semesters ending prior to the winter break, and then also the year ending prior to Memorial Day. But again, you know, it is not without its drawbacks. I think this represents what you consider an adaptive change. I mean, it really requires a shift in culture. It's not a technical change. It's not a, you know, a flipping on of a light, light switch. And we heard today from some folks about the impact of tourism. We don't know exactly what that would be, but we, we have experts in the room who can help to inform us on that. We also recognize, and this came directly from the survey, prior commitments that families have made. And I know that is a huge concern, but of course, the school system would work with them. And then also, the impact to our 10-month employees who do not currently spread their wages over, or their salaries over 12 months. That would be an impact to them. And then there is not an option, and I call it a winter interception, but I think probably more of a fall interception. There were folks who wanted to see that October break, and there really is not the opportunity for that because it would end up pushing your end of year beyond the December dates and into January. And then spring break is earlier, and, you know, and for some people, that's a negative. But when we met in calendar committee, it was a huge positive. It was looking at where the year would end. It made sense for it to be earlier, especially since you still could have that four-day window with, you know, Good Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Easter Monday being off around what we traditionally do in terms of that Easter break. And then additional time off in January. For some, it's a huge positive, but we also recognize for others, it's a negative. And then probably the biggest transition for folks would be just that much, much earlier start date. So these were the things that really, in my opinion, came out of that survey. And again, I really, you know, want to say, I appreciate the people who took the time to either email or offer their feedback or just to complete that survey and to offer their comments. I think it has really helped to, to inform this, this process. And I know there's been a lot of discussion and conversation about the Brunswick County calendar, and so I wanted to provide you just a little information there. With our proposed calendar, we'd have 177 instructional days. With the Brunswick County calendar, there's 170 days. With our calendar, there are 17 teacher workdays. With the Brunswick County calendar, there are 22 teacher workdays, and so that's where you see the less, the decrease in the student day. So instead of days being given to instruction, those days are transitioned to teacher workdays. So that's why you have less contact with, with children. We, both calendars have 11 holiday, 11 holidays. And I'm trying to think, and I think they have two additional vacation days beyond, beyond hours. And a couple of concerns, again, from the instructional side of the house, is just the decreased number of days in terms of contact. So it's not about hours, but it's the number of days with, with children. And we know that, and prior, previously, we made some adjustments to our, our hours with families when we had to make up time in relation to the hurricane, and that was very challenging for, for some folks. I think we ended up trying to add some day, some, some time to the beginning of the day, 15 minutes or 10 minutes or something like that. And I do remember how disruptive that, that was. Also, we do have some concerns with this calendar in that it reduces the number of days for which students who are identified with a disability would receive IEP services. And I'm sure Julie Askew can surely speak to that much more eloquently than I in terms of the, the concerns about impact and in terms of that. And then also, and I think Dr. Markle shared this in, in email to, to the board, for those families who have children who are food insecure, it would mean an additional seven to 10 days for which they would not be coming into our schools, and we would not be providing that, that to them. So that would be something that I believe our families would be concerned about. And then also, the additional burden for families to have to provide childcare for seven to 10 additional days, depends on how the calendar fell out. And then there is the possibility of reduced employment for bus drivers and cafeteria workers and other hourly employees. So if folks get paid because they provide a service to children, and we're providing services to children for seven less days, then there's a possibility that we would not be able to pay those folks. You know, would we pay cafeteria workers if there aren't any children in the building? You know, would we pay bus drivers to drive buses if, if we, we don't have children on those buses? Now, it may be that we could find other things for bus drivers to do, other things for cafeteria workers to do, but I know we do a lot of hourly tutors and folks like that, that I think it would be difficult to be able to pay them. And then again, the Brunswick County calendar maintains that misalignment with the community cal, the community college calendar as well. So, you know, understanding that there are the major drawbacks, we understand what we see as the major benefits. But I also wanted to just spend a little bit of time talking about the Brunswick County calendar because we've looked at it before and just really had some concerns about reducing our time and our opportunity to impact children in our building. So this is the, the calendar that we are proposing, the 12-month calendar, and I'm glad to answer any questions that you guys may have. And then also, behind it is the pre-K calendar because similar to Restart, there is, you know, the Restart calendar and then the Restart Pre-K calendar. So similar to that, we've got the 12-month traditional calendar, which we would, are presenting to you this evening, and then the pre-K calendar that would mirror that. But again, glad to answer any questions you might have.
I would like to clear up one misconception. This, these calendars, similar to this, were approved by the State Board of Education.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Markle. You're right. There is a calendar that's out there, Iredale-Statesville. I think that is the one where there was a letter from Eric Snyder, I believe is his name. And the issue with that particular calendar is that they placed an intercession in July, and there weren't any specific teacher workdays or, or days of employment in the month of July or in the month of June. And so that was the one that was not in compliance with general statute related to calendar. So thank you for that, Dr. Markle.
LeShawn-
Yes, sir.
Dr. Smith, I'm sorry.
No, yes.
Would you explain, there are counties that are adding 15 or 20 minutes a day to classes to make up for?
So, yeah, so that would be similar to the Brunswick County calendar. So there are districts who have chosen that in lieu of instructional day, so in lieu of a child being present in front of a teacher, we're going to make their day longer. So if you get out at 3:30, you're going to get out at 3:45. If you, you know, if you, you know, start at eight, maybe we start at 7:45. So they have extended their days. From the instructional side of the house and the conversations I've had with folks, we don't believe that that would provide us with the best quality. We believe very strongly that additional days, full days, in, in the presence of a highly-trained, highly-qualified teacher makes a difference in a child's life, as opposed to piecemealing it, you know, 10, 15 minutes a day over the course of 170 days.
And in high school, it'd be what, like, three minutes per period?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure how, how they would, would do that. I, I know when we have had these conversations in the past around makeup time for hurricanes because we actually did it with, with Florence. Overwhelmingly, it was the five days as opposed to adding some additional time. And that was the response that we got from, from our teachers and from our families.
How many days do we miss in Florence?
Say, I'm sorry.
How many days do we miss in Florence?
We missed 17 days with Florence.
How many, and we made up how many?
How many, and we made up how many?
So we made up, for the most part, we added five additional days to the, to the end of the, to the end of the calendar.
I, I, I have a pro, I've always had a problem with a kid starting school and going on Christmas vacation and then come back brain-ned taking exams. I, I think that was foolish and I like that in this. The only thing I don't like is the kids going back so early. And if you could steal some days in there and move that up, I'd be all in.
Well, unfortunately, we are so constrained by the current calendar law that came into effect in '04 that we have to really get creative to fit within the scope of the calendar law. The best of all solutions would be simply to allow districts to set their own calendars. But we're not allowed to do that. So we have to go to a calendar that meets the letter of the law to, to get the circumstances that we're looking for. I mean, I would love to, I would love to say, we can start this date, end on this date and make it work. But because of the current constraints that came in in 2004, we simply can't do that. So we have to go to a very, a calendar, a very creative calendar that meets the letter of the law.
Well.
We don't have to.
Well, here's, here's the thing, is from what I understand, Lincoln County calendar was presented. Brunswick County wasn't discussed until after the fact. I think we do need more time to actually flesh out what's going on here. Because what you said about Brunswick County, I can counter with any number of things. But this isn't really the time. I mean, look how late it is, the time and the place for people to make good decisions if you keep dragging it out at this point in time. Because I can counter all those, just about 90% of them. But as I said, this is with rational reasons why that calendar could work here. But this really is not the time and the place at this late a date to really do a good job. And we need to do a good job. So I think the suggestion has been to table this for a while. And I, I think that that's probably concerned the circumstances to make the best decision would be a good idea so we can discuss this further and come to a solution that everybody, because I really believe in compromise. And there's a lot of good points here on both sides and we can do it.
So I, I would agree. I would, I would recommend, look, the problem I have is that nobody has come to me and said, this is why it's bad for students. So I, I definitely understand that, you know, there's concerns on all sides. And, and I do, I'm very sympathetic to the fact that we as a board have been instituting a lot of changes. I, I would recommend adopting the traditional calendar for 2021 and looking at providing a good timetable. I, I, I would look to adapt this new year-round calendar for '21, '22 to give those people time to adjust, to let people know that, you know, it is coming if that is in fact the will of the board. But I would like to see this on the agenda moving forward, either in December or in January to give people that timeframe that they need. But I'll also add that in July, we got information on a year-round calendar in our packet and it has been discussed amongst this board with the administration. This is not like a surprise. We've had this discussion. This is not a new thing, like, oh, my gosh, Brunswick County came out with this calendar. These have been ongoing discussions and the plan was always the Lincoln County calendar.
The fact of the matter is, and I, you keep saying that, but you're the chairman, you were the chair of the Calendar Committee. You had the obligation to look at other calendars.
Right.
You know, it's, it's like when you're on other committees. You look at different options. We talked about redistricting today. We had eight different maps. You were presented one calendar and told to approve it, and you approved it. We're looking at, you look at these results. You have the survey results that show 63% that say are in favor. Those, that survey was skewed. You, we got an email in the morning, and I didn't get the email, my wife got it. Forwarded it to me and said, hey, you're going to get a survey that says if you start a little bit earlier, are you good with getting out Memorial Day? That's basically what the survey said. Didn't mention anything about a start date, which is 10% earlier than where we actually were. Didn't mention anything about three weeks of Christmas. Then everyone gets a phone call and says, hey, if we start a little bit earlier, you good at getting out Memorial Day? That was what was told to everyone. And then all of a sudden, we're getting all these, you know, people say yes or no. Half the people got hung up on, which I understand is not, not your problem, it's the system. But now we're in a, we paint ourselves in a situation where, I'm not telling you that you meant to do, that y'all wanted to do this, but it almost looks like the questions were result-driven. Because the public wasn't given the option of saying, hey, we're going to start on August 10th this year, which is 17 days earlier than we started this year, which is, is 10% of the 170 days. They were never told about a three-week Christmas, other than that was public. And I, I understand the reason why you would get that extra week because people can catch up. But what about those kids that don't need to catch up? That could use that additional instructional time? Let's put them back in school. They can learn, you can, that first week can be catching up, the other kids can continue to learn. I agree with trying to align a calendar with Cape Fear Community College or Brunswick Community College or Pender or those, because I think we have partners. We have partners here. We have our principal of the year sitting as the superintendent in Brunswick County right now. I think it's important to have conversations with Brunswick County, with Pender County, especially with, we have CTEC going on. We're trying to get Pender kids into CTEC. It's important to have those conversations and figure something out that's best for southeastern North Carolina, for the kids in southeastern North Carolina, the parents and the community. I don't really care about Lincoln County, no offense. That's different, that's different from us. They're not as much of partners as everyone else. And I would have just thought that it would have been important to do Brunswick County. Because I did call Brunswick County and they had the exact kind of handout that you had. That's right here. And it talked about a lot of the stuff. You know, we're talking about 63% parents were, were excited about it. Well, Brunswick County last year, because they just changed this year, they have 172 instructional days. Brunswick County last year did the same survey, except they told them the, the, the proposed calendar. They surveyed 125 school staff members, 83% endorsed it. They surveyed 100, 1,282 parents, 83% endorsed it. They surveyed 950 students, 86% endorsed it. So they too had a really high response for, for that community. So I'm not telling, I, I, it would be great, I, I think it's smart to have exams before, before December. But there's ways to do it other than pushing the Lincoln County model. I think that we all can talk, they have a fall intercession in there. They have a two-day fall intercession.
Did Brunswick County reach out to us?
It was not Brunswick County's fault, but it was not.
Did Brunswick County look at other calendars? Do we know that? I mean, I'm just saying like.
I called, I, I took the initiative to call Brunswick County.
Right, but did they, did they look across, reach across the?
No idea. No idea.
Let me tell you something. I was not, I was not, wait a minute. I was not told to pass a calendar and just pass it.
Okay.
That's not what happened.
How many, how many calendars were you presenting?
I looked at year-round calendars because I understood that to be, and everybody knew we were looking at year-round calendars. When did somebody come back and say, excuse me, let's look at Brunswick County?
How many, Nelson, how many calendars did you look at?
When did anybody say go in a different direction? Year-round calendar discussion, right here, July. When did anybody say, hey, different direction, let's try Brunswick County? So I was not told, hey, pass a calendar.
I think it would be smart.
I think I can make up my own mind on a calendar. Thank you very much.
Can I say this? Thank you for all the work that you have done. You guys have done great with what the information you had. I just wanted to thank the work that people's done, whether, no matter what our decisions, and I know you've put a lot of work into it.
And it's a complex issue we've been talking about forever.
Absolutely.
But I think that, I would hope that we can at least look at, look at other options, talk to the community and, and see if we can come up with something. I mean, the fact of the matter is, is when people found, we know, I mean, you know, we had a board member that went on TV that said, everyone's up for this and.
I was asked to characterize the feedback.
We've now, we've now, we know it, everyone's not for this. I mean, the emails we've got have been over, just our board emails have been overwhelmingly against it. I understand the survey, but I think the survey was a little bit skewed because they weren't giving all the information.
We did the survey two ways. We did it by phone. We also did it by online, which had all of the calendars right there. I'll be happy to share the, I'll be happy to separate out the information from the telephone surveys. I have serious issues with a Brunswick calendar that cuts days out of the calendar, that cuts those teacher-student days out of the calendar. Brunswick's day is five inches longer than ours. That is not a substitute for seven days with an effective teacher. When you were a teacher.
It's five minutes, what did you say?
Their day is five inches longer than, than our, our current day right now. I mean, as a teacher, wouldn't you have wanted seven more days with a student?
But I think it's five, isn't it? It's 172, 177 to 172.
And, and the thing, and the thing is, right now, they have teachers work, I mean, we can, we can do things. We don't, we're not stuck in Brunswick, we're not stuck in this one. So that's why I'm saying, take time, do it right, okay? I think, I think all these are valid, but just choosing right now when it's obviously not right.
But instruction's important, but, but I will tell you, being in the school's important. Our, our teachers are great teachers. There is no less, and the reason, you know why I asked about Florence? We missed 12 days that we didn't make up. Just last board meeting, you got up in front of us and told us how great of a job we did last year. We missed 12 days. Highest graduation rate we've ever had. We are now about, but I know they're resilient and I understand that part. But the fact of the matter is, we did do a great job last year.
But if you took those days and cumulatively added those up year after year after year, you cannot tell me that that's not going to have a detrimental impact on student learning. There are teachers in this room, a good teacher in front of a student is still the best way to educate students. And cutting days out of the calendar, to me, as a, as an educational professional, I have concerns with that. I, I still think, I want a calendar, I wish, the best solution is the legislature would give us the flexibility to set our own calendars.
Yes, everyone agrees that.
But if they're not going to, then I have to adjust this calendar to make it best for kids.
Well, let's, let's do that.
And I prefer not to do that by cutting out student-teacher days.
Well, let's do that. Let's take time and look at it because then you've got this extra workday that they have.
We've been asking since the day the law went into effect for the legislature to change it.
We're talking about tonight, okay?
In the meantime, we do, we are, it sounds like there is not momentum to pass the calendar as, this draft as presented. Am I hearing that correctly?
Correct.
So, so we, what we would need is the Calendar Committee to go back and come up with the, an alternative proposal for a calendar for 2021, because as of right now, we do not have one.
We can reconvene at the earliest possible convenience. I want to make sure this gets done fast.
I don't think it should be, absolutely not. It doesn't need to get done fast. I mean, that's what we did before.
Well, we need to pass the traditional calendar for server.
We're, we've already said we're doing the traditional calendar, we're keeping the calendar same for 2020, 2021.
You don't know what that is. You don't know what the start date will be.
Well, the start date is, is by the legislature, is told us by the legislature.
Right, but you have teacher workdays and you're going to have days that, you're going to have undesignedated, designated, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
You're going to have to come up with that, correct?
But, but, so you're not saying fast for the 21, 22 calendar?
No.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm saying doing nothing and we'll come back and reconvene this discussion in December with our December board meeting, when we have a traditional calendar in front of us.
Yes.
Okay.
Good idea.
I, I would like to know, you told me that we, it's got to be kind of like what the state says.
The, the state sets the, sets the calendar rules. This calendar meets the state definition of a year-round calendar. So that's how we can do the, do what we do in this calendar because it meets that legal definition.
But it's either, but it's either that or none at all? Or can it be just around a little bit?
No, it said, the, the state law for traditional calendars says you can't start earlier than August 27. You can't end earlier than June 10th. Isn't it June 10th?
Yeah, give or take when the Friday falls in there.
Yes, for the Friday falls, yes.
Yeah, okay. So that, that says if you're running on a traditional calendar, that you have to start, end, somewhere in between there, in between there. What we're trying to do is we're trying to say, hey, we, we have 12-month employees, which means we have year-round schools.
And what some, what some districts have done is in order to, in order to, the, the community college piece drives a lot of this. Some counties, in order to meet that community college piece and get their kids done before Christmas, have chosen to eliminate student days. And I, as an educator, have a personal concern with that. Because I still believe that a teacher in front of a student is the best way to do that.
Can I say something about that? I worked in districts where they started to align them with the local community college. The community college started like a week earlier.
Right.
And so what they did is they provided transportation to those students that did that. And then they ended up at the same time at the end, the end. So there are ways to work with this and still have the alignment with the, with Cape Fear and UNCW. But we need to look at that, I agree. I'm saying that.
The problem becomes with those count, with the.
Well, this is not, I mean, we, we can go on for little things, pulling them out and, all right, let's do this right and let them meet, come back.
Well, I thought the Calendar Committee had done it right.
I thought they did a good job as well. And the overwhelming response I heard from everybody I talked to in the public was that they were very happy about it, including people that thought three-week amount of time at Christmas was good. So I actually heard, heard a lot of positive feedback. I made a presentation in front of Rotary. I emphasized the fact that this was a proposed calendar. I had about six or seven people come up to me afterwards from a lot of different arenas and they were, they were complimentary. I also emphasized the fact that I recognized how difficult this is for the, for the tourism community, a community. And I looked around other states. Charleston has our current calendar. Savannah has a calendar that starts earlier. And it would be interesting to figure out how they all make it work. So I recognize that issue. I'm not downplaying this. But I also recognize from the community college perspective, the fact that the CCP numbers do go down, contrary to what Miss Justice has reported. I can tell you across the, across the state, they do go down, every single community college. So that impact cannot be minimized. The, the, the students cannot manage the, the schedule the way that it is now as, as well as, as it could be because we are not aligned. So I think we have work to do. I don't think that this board is in agreement. So why don't we, we will, I think that, I don't want to rush this. I don't think anyone else wants to rush this. So it sounds like we are in agreement to come back in December with a traditional calendar. And then we will go from there.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the discussion.
Item E, property insurance renewal, appendix U, Mr. Bullard.
Thank you, Ms. Easton. This is the annual renewal of your property and contents insurance. We, I am recommending that you renew with the DPI insurance fund. Again, the increase in premium is 4.2% from last year. So the total premium will be $597,031. We did look at other coverage because of the problems that we experienced with getting everything covered from Hurricane Florence. And what we were finding from more than one broker is that there is potential better coverage available, but it's probably going to cost you four or five times that amount in premiums. So you're going to be looking at 2.5 to $3 million a year in premiums with potential higher deductibles. But it would cover the wind-driven rain damages that we had trouble getting coverage for, in Hurricane Florence through the DPI policy. So obviously, there's not money in the budget to increase your premiums to that extent this year. But if it's something the board is interested in, we could certainly bring it back next year or even mid-policy year. DPI has told us that we, if we find coverage we prefer with a private insurance company, that they would cancel our policy mid-year and give us a program out of refund. So something I've been discussing with Dr. Markley and Mary Hazel, but certainly with that type of premium increase, it would, it would take some budget adjustment to cover that. So it's basically a matter of you get what you pay for. Right now, the DPI policy is a very reasonable premium, but it has some gaps in what it will cover in the event of a storm like Hurricane Florence where you have a lot of rain that doesn't necessarily cause physical damage to your building but gets in and causes damage to the inside of the building. That's the potential gap in coverage with that policy. Whereas the private insurance will cover more, but is four to five times more expensive. So my recommendation at this point is to renew with DPI and I'll continue to examine other possibilities. And certainly, if you have any input, let me know. Because if we do want to go to the more expensive policy next year, we're going to, that, that will need to be planned for in the budget process.
Make your motion.
Any discussion?
Did you, they are moving insurance out of DPI over to the State's Treasurer's office.
Yes, the legislature decided to move this, this type of insurance out of DPI and into the Department of Insurance. That is in the process of happening. DPI will continue to handle workers' comp claims for school board employees that are paid in part, at least in part, by state funds. So in a sense, that's sort of a self-insured insurance program for workers' comp claims, which would remain with DPI. But it, but the property and contents insurance is being moved to the Department of Insurance. Don't know what changes that will bring, but.
We're hoping for more, a little more quality on the.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll see if that increases the, the coverage. But right now, they're just in the process of making that move.
So there's a motion. So, there's a motion and a second, I believe. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item fourteen, correspondence, is there any correspondence, any board member would like to share? Hearing none. Announcements, the next regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education will be on Tuesday, December third, at five-thirty PM at, right here, the Board of Ed Center. Now, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to, Mr. Bullard.
It will be one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A, one, three and six for student confidentiality, potentially attorney-client privilege and personnel.
Move for closed session?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session.
All right.